Wise and loving God, we stand before you with the hands, minds, and hearts that you have given us. Help us to put our hands at your service to the work of our city. Please bless our minds to understand the best way to help those less fortunate. We ask that you give all of our hearts the ability to inspire the actions our minds conceive. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is Monday, November 4, 2019, 5:30, and I will call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of action this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremsef.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. We do only have one change this evening. Item number three under ordinances and resolutions actually occurred at the last city council meeting, so we're able to remove that second reading, and that has already been published and will be effective shortly. So, one less item this evening.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion adopting the amended agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. All in favor of that motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. One reminder, we have been asked by a number of people to make sure that we speak into the microphones this evening, so if we can try to remember to do that. I know that the people watching on TV and in the audience would appreciate that. There are no public hearings or bids to award this evening under petitions and communications. We have a legislator of distinction award, and we're honored to have State Senator Bill Engelbretson with us here tonight. And so, every year, the League of Minnesota Cities recognizes a select few legislators for their service to the cities, and this year, one of the recipients was our own State Senator Bill Engelbretson. So, I want to say thank you to Bill, but before we do that, I want to just read part of the letter that the League of Minnesota Cities sent. And it says, it goes on to say, "Specifically, as Chair of the Senate Environmental and Natural Resources Finance Committee, Senator Engelbretson has worked steadily to raise issues of concern to local governments. Furthermore, our membership appreciates his routine consultation with the league's staff and membership on the issues potentially affecting cities." So, we know how much Senator Engelbretson has done for the city of Fergus Falls over the past few years. We know that it's the strong relationships we've had with state legislature that have allowed a number of projects to go forward. So, we're just really honored to have you here tonight to accept our appreciation, and would you please come up and say a few words, Bill?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It's certainly a true honor to represent District 8 in the Minnesota Senate. I've been now there for 13 years, and in my previous life, you know where I was in law enforcement. But environment has always been part of my, part of my life. In fact, I just came this mor- or was out this morning to my, to my deer hunting shack in Eastern Otter Tail. I know you're not supposed to eat the deer in Eastern Otter Tail if you live on the west side of Otter Tail. I heard that. I heard that at the last governor opener, actually, and I thought, wow, there really is a divide, but anyhow, I represent both just as well as, as either one, so, as well as parts of Douglas County, as you know. But the environment's always been near and dear to me, and why wouldn't it be? I mean, we represent, I represent over one-tenth of the lakes in the state of Minnesota, so the environment is, is, you know, near and dear to everybody. And so, I carry that message. But I don't do that alone. I have a tremendous, tremendous committee. It's, it's made up of mostly rural people, both Democrats and Republicans. The lead Democrat is David Tomassoni from, from up on the range, and he's been just, just great to work with. When we are not in control, he was the chairman, so we work real well together. And dealing with issues mainly wastewater and treatment and things like that for the cities, we call on, calling the administrators all the time about this and that, and contrary to what everybody thinks, we don't always read all the bills because we simply can't get it all done, but we do get advice from the cities. And the lobbyists that come there that you hire are certainly well worth their, their dollars that you're paying them, and it really makes a big difference. So, what a, what a great honor to accept this, and thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to see you.
Thank you, guys. Wow, that's pretty nice coming right down here.
Congratulations, Senator.
Nice to see you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, guys. Thank you, Senator.
Good luck deer hunting.
Yeah.
On the consent agenda this evening, there are four items. Lynn has put them on the board. They're also copied in your package. If anyone would like to bring, take any of those items off and discuss them individually, we can do that. If not, I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have the first reading of ordinance 937 series, rezoning of 1174 Western Avenue. And if there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney, but we just need someone to introduce that ordinance this evening.
Other news, Your Honor?
Thank you, Tom. Item number two is a second reading of ordinance 927 series, the Deed Demo Loan and Deed Cleanup Revolving Loan. We just need a roll call on that, but before we do that, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that this week, we got some very good news from the Environmental Protection Agency through Deed, that the final EPA dollars have been approved in the amount of $1,230. There's a lot of work that went into that for a lot of, many people, but the committee that worked on that, I just want to say thank you to Steve Erickson and the negotiating committee, and Andrew, Bill, Annie Sat on that, the Port Authority, a lot of Anthony. So, a lot of people put a lot of time and a lot of effort into that. But I just wanted to also note, that's $1.23 million grant. $780,000 of that is going to be immediately forgiven on the environmental cleanup of that property. The second, the next closest grant that Deed, through the EPA, that has ever awarded was $200,000 of grants. So, that $780,000 is significantly more than any community has ever gotten, and that's because of a lot of work that's gone in by a lot of people. So, I just want to acknowledge that before we, before we accept that. That's a big, it's a big deal. And that property that sat dilapidated for decades is going to get cleaned up and repurposed and on the tax roll. So, that's just, it's a great deal for the city, so I want to acknowledge that. But with that, we need a roll call on the second reading.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number three, as Andrew mentioned, has been removed because we voted on that two weeks ago. Item number four is a resolution approving the Design Development Executive Summary for Public Improvement 9767 and Public Improvement 9768, the Downtown Riverfront Project, and I will call on, me first, Andrew Bremsef to introduce that.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. Excited this evening to be able to share progress update on this project with all of you, and then, once Barry Glinky with Bolton &amp; Mink is done with his presentation, I'm happy to get to talk about next steps as it relates to this project. As you all recall, we've been working on this project for quite some time, with beginnings being part of the master plan back in 2016, and then, most recently, in February of 2019, when the new council members came on board, we reiterated that this project was the number one priority for the city of Fergus Falls. So, like I mentioned, excited to be able to show you guys this evening the progress, talk about next steps and timeline as things move forward here through the process. Barry Glinky with Bolton &amp; Mink has been the lead on this project for quite some time and was also involved in the implementation, or with the development of the master plan. And he's going to share with us this evening the Design Development Executive Summary, which is the phase that we've been working on for about the last year to year and a half now, certainly slowed down with the bonding bill not going through the last legislative session. If the executive summary is acceptable this evening to the city council, when Barry's done presenting that, we'll be looking for a resolution accepting that executive summary, and then, like I mentioned before, I'll be glad to talk about what that means and what the next steps are. So, I would like to turn it over to Barry and have him walk through that, and then I look forward to discussing what's next.
Good evening, Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andrew, rest of the council. Probably not a whole lot of new stuff in here. We've, we've went over this quite a bit in the past, but as Andrew talked about, it's been a long, long process that we went through. I believe the executive summary is in your packet, so you had enough time to peruse that. So, I'll hit the highlights through that. You'll notice some of the dates are earlier this year. We were expecting the bonding bill to fund some of this project here with this session that ended in June, so we haven't updated it since then. Now, we're, now that we're progressing through that bonding, legislative bonding stuff again for next session, we wanted to get this on the docket and get this over to you guys for, for a looksee and see what we've got. So, I'm going to start on the West Block and kind of just walk through as we go to the East here, the elements that we've, that are included in that document that we took from that master plan and scoped it down into that design development to figure out exactly what, what the city and constituents want to build and want to see down there. So, starting, starting over there on Union, we have a river market structure, sometimes referred to as a farmer's market, but other market or gathering space there. As it sits right now, it's a, it's an open-air structure, just kind of a covered, covered structure to have markets, other events, activities, gatherings in there. And then, in between that is the start of the River Trail, the Riverwalk Trail, which is part of the LCCMR funding. So, we start throwing in a bunch of different, different opportunities here for, for dollar figures to fund the improvements. And then also, as we go down towards the river there, this project also included riverbank restoration, so natural plantings, doing some refurbishment on the retaining walls there, also rehabbing some of the storm shore outlet structures down there that have seen better days. As long as, before we put a bunch of stuff on top of it, we're going to start at the bottom and, and fix some of that stuff, too. And then, as we head to the, to the East, continuing the Riverwalk Trail into Morgue Plaza atmosphere as we go through there, then we get to an overlook structure there. You can see right in the center, we'll have a kind of a cantilevered overlook structure of the river that'll hang out a little bit, so you can look up and down with some, some seating there. Then, as we go to the East, crossing, crossing the street there, we'll have another, another artway entrance into that area for, for some signage and whatever interpretive art that goes in there. That River Trail continues to the East, swings down towards the riverfront, along the river. We have a restroom planned in there for, for the regional trail aspects and for activities that'll happen down here. Next to that, as we progress to the East, is a splash park, or more of a bubble jet park, a smaller, a smaller water, water feature structure there. There has been talk of maybe expanding that with some continued fundraising that's happening on the private side of things. There's also a shade structure there for, a pergular shade structure for watching that entertainment, and as well as the amphitheater. That's next. That's sized to handle about 250 people with the permanent seating to be expanded to, to 450 or so, with the area towards the parking lot with bleachers, standing room only, the, the lawn spaced by the shade structure, and even expanding over into the grass area by the federal courthouse. That trail structure, or that trail continues on to the East. It drives off the page there, but that is the continuation of the LCCMR Trail that continues all the way up to Veterans Park, Lincoln. In addition there, we also have an elevated walk path that'll head from the plaza area up to the elevation of the street to open us up for some more parking opportunities on the public parking lots over here, over by the bank and whatnot, to help with the parking, parking concerns that were raised through the public engagement process. In addition, both of those parking, parking lots adjacent to there were also redesigned to allow to maximize parking, so we don't lose as much. And also, working with the businesses in there, we redesigned those to make sure those work for those folks as well, along with city staff on how we're going to collect garbage and recycling and all that stuff. The main, the other main driver was that, was to, to lay that out, so Otter Tail Power has a spot to relocate some of their infrastructure that is currently in the way for all of this to happen. So, part of that parking lot redesign was for that as well, and so those are kind of laid out there as well. Other than that, that pretty much summarizes what we're at to date with the design development document. We know how many stalls are going to be in the bathroom. We know how big the amphitheater is going to be as far as a footprint, how many people are going to be able to be there, what size the covered market structure is going to be as far as all that stuff goes, what kind of crossing, pedestrian crossing enhancements are going to be done to maximize those safety efforts as there as well, so.
Thank you, Barry. So, with that, we will have some discussion, but we'll first get on the floor, get a resolution accepting those design documents.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Tom, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions council has of Barry of the Design Development Executive Summary?
I've got a couple of questions. I mean, one of the things we talked about earlier was, my concern with the amphitheater is obviously how long it will get used in the season, but also, do we actually have a marketing plan? And, you know, my, my concern is we're building something with the hope that people will come, and, you know, I haven't seen anything about how are we going to market this. And, you know, my other concern on this is, you know, what will be the impact on the Center of the Arts? You know, the Center of the Arts does a lot of programs in the summer, you know, which is their bread and butter, and, you know, that's a, a foundation block of our arts community. And, you know, will this be cumulative or will it take away? And, and, you know, recognizing that there's been nothing done on how we're going to market this and how we're going to fill it, I have concerns about spending almost, you know, $7 million on something that is going to take away from something that is relatively successful in the town.
Andrew?
Yeah, Your Honor, thank you, Councilmember Hicks. Great question. You've raised it before and haven't forgotten about it. We've met probably a half dozen times with, excuse me, Michael Burgraph from the Center for the Arts, and in the proposal that we're going to talk about here in about two minutes, it specifically calls him out by name because he is key to the conversation about how we're going to not only market this, the thing, but program the thing as well, and ensuring that it doesn't detract from the existing asset in the Center for the Arts. I think, I don't want to sit up here and speak for Michael, but I certainly think he sees the value and understands the vision and has appreciated the time we've spent with him and the time we're going to spend with him going forward as spelled out in this proposal that we'll talk about here shortly. But, long story short, it's, it's something that is certainly on our minds. It's something that is going to be addressed in this next phase, and it's something that has been a continuous dialogue throughout the last several months. We've gone as far as, as talking internally about funding opportunities related to marketing and programming and having some sort of a relationship with the Center for the Arts to do some of that. So, I don't have anything definitive to share with you today, but I do want to reassure you and others who are thinking that, that, that is something that's going to be addressed. It is top of mind, and beyond the Center for the Arts, there's been other groups and other interests that have spoken with us about the, the desire to be able to program in the space going forward, and one of those certainly would be like the public library, who would host several events, obviously seasonal events in the space, but the desire to see the, the activity downtown. The Children's Museum, Otter Cove, has expressed the desire to have some programming spill out from the building into the, that space as well. So, I see a lot of different groups and synergies that could be in play, but, but certainly appreciate your, your point about formalizing something, and, and I'm going to put that right on Barry's shoulders because that's going to be part of the next phase, should we go that direction.
And one, one thing I would just add is, from my perspective, is I agree that we, that's, you know, we definitely need to make sure that we are working in conjunction with the Center for the Arts, but we are, you know, filling this space along the river. But I would add also, not just the amphitheater, I think the farmer's mark, the, the structure, the market structure has opportunities to also, you know, have programming, events, and just the more we can drive people downtown in all those structures, not just the amphitheater, but the market, the, you know, the, the park area, everything. So, just, I would agree, Anthony. I think it's really important that we identify that as we go forward. Any other, but yes, Tom?
Well, I'll just piggyback on what you said, Your Honor, that, you know, with, with the recent losses we've experienced in the retail sector, I think we need to be finding as many ways as possible to get people to come downtown and, and stay downtown. You know, and I'm, I'm envisioning things like the, you know, you know, nightly concerts where we, you know, work together with, with downtown shops and restaurants to maybe stay open later, offer some kinds of specials, that types of thing. And I, I have also heard from a number of groups, some churches included, that would be interested in using the space for a variety of different programs. I think there's opportunity with the school district. So, I, I just, I see it as, as, you know, kind of one of the sparks that will help to ignite our downtown revitalization.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we have a resolution on the floor. Roll call, please.
Fish? Yes.
Pinker? Yes.
Foaming? Yes.
Hoover? Yes.
Yes.
No.
That resolution is approved. Item number five would be a resolution approving Bolton &amp; Mink's professional service proposal for construction documents for the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan. I'll call on Andrew Bremsef.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. So, we just approved the design development phase, and the, the next step then is to move towards construction documents and final design. So, really diving into that detail level that we just talked about and really putting things together to a point where they're ready to go out for, for bid. The reason that this is the next step and the reason that I feel the timing is right, well, there's a few reasons. First of all, as you all know, we are seeking bonding dollars through the state legislature, and one of the things that we hear as feedback from the state legislature and Representative Mary Murphy, who's the chair of that committee, has very distinctly said, these projects, if you're going to ask for money, need to be shovel-ready. Well, in order to be shovel-ready, we need to have the design complete, and we have to be ready to go out for bids when that money is allocated at the end of the session in May of next year. They've also been very clear that this money is to be spent on construction, not on pre-work, not on design, nothing with plans. They want their money to go towards shovels in the ground, creating jobs. So, that message has been heard loud and clear, and in order to be prepared for that and to be in an acceptable and appropriate place, we need to be ready for that. Otter Tail Power Company, the, the local power company, has also expressed a desire to play a key role in this project, and that would be through relocating the above-ground lines over here within the project area, which is a significant project, not only in time, but also expense. And what Otter Tail Power is asking from the city, which I think is, is a reasonable request, is that there's more of a commitment, and there's a level of commitment that this thing's actually going to proceed to construction. And so, taking this next step and making this investment and showing that we're actually working towards bringing this project out for bid will certainly give them the level of comfort they need to further consider and, and move that along. And quite honestly, that work needs to be done prior to our construction taking place, hopefully, next spring, if we get there. The other important elements to this construction development, or the construction document development, is that having these documents completed and in hand allows us to go out for bid and to bid in alternate. So, what we're proposing this evening is that we design all the options that have been talked about, all the things within the proposal, and then, when we actually put this project out for bid, the council can look at these things one by one, kind of in an a la carte style, and say, this is what we want to award, this is the project components that we think are important and that fall within our budget. And certainly, doing this design now and having that ready would allow for some future additions if that were the case, inappropriate when the time came to awarding a bid. This is the process that, and procedure that's consistent with how other city projects have been formulated and are advanced through the process. So, I'm, I'm kind of waiting to give you the dollar amount because it's a big one, and I want you all to, to be ready for it, but this is a big project that really is, is meant to, yeah, there, there's actually three projects, and I'll touch on that, but this is really a, a big look at our Downtown Riverfront area and really meant to be a transformative one. So, ultimately, as well, if we get to the final construction documents and we're ready to go out for bid, that will have the level of detail necessary for us to have better numbers, to really have an exact number as to what we feel the project will cost. Of course, it all determined, it's all determined based on a competitive bid, but it would allow us to be more confident in our numbers, knowing that everything's been scoped and, and all the variables are understood, which allows Bill and team to have the, the numbers to really finalize that financing package and pull it all together. So, to get into the meat and potatoes of the actual proposal this evening, like the mayor just mentioned, there's actually three projects that we're proposing being designed all at once, not only because there's overlap, but also because I think there's extreme efficiencies that can be understood by doing them at once, and also, the timing is, is rather important because there's funding tied to some, and there's, like I said, overlap amongst projects as well. So, there's three projects. The first one is the Downtown Riverfront Project, which is what Barry just talked about. That's with the amphitheater, the riverfront balcony, the water features, market structure, restroom, et cetera. I think we've covered that in great detail. The second project that we're proposing is designed at the same time here, is the LCCMR Trail, which runs from Veterans Park through the downtown to Union Avenue with a pedestrian crossing bridge to be located. We're leaning towards trying to get that bridge as close as possible to provide pedestrians a view of the falls at Central Dam. And, and I want to mention with that one, we previously were awarded $600,000 through the LCCMR Fund and the state legislature. So, that, that project is, is real close, and the financing for that is available now. And then, the third one is the parking lot reconstruction and configuration and Union Avenue improvement. So, that would be these parking lots, the actual surface parking lots between Mill Street, Court Street, and Union Avenue, not necessarily on the riverbank, but the, the parking itself as we need to reconfigure that, repave, and, and do all the things associated with that. So, the contract before you includes all three of those things. Staff is recommending that we do it all at once to realize those efficiencies and give the council the greatest flexibility in terms of awarding what the project scope should be. The dollar amount associated with these three projects and, and final design and construction docs is a not-to-exceed amount of $787,000. This includes $591,000 for the Downtown Riverfront portion that we just talked about. It includes $100,000 to design the LCCMR Trail project that I just talked about from Veterans Park to Union Avenue and that pedestrian bridge, and then, $96,000 for, excuse me, design of the parking lots and the Union Avenue improvements that have been proposed. As you saw in your packet this evening, some of these costs are lump sums, otherwise, they are noted as not-to-exceed hourly estimate expenses. And what that means is that this $787,000 is the maximum contract, but the number will, could certainly be less based on the actual hour, hours spent and the expenses associated with those hours. So, that would be the goal, is to, to obviously do this as efficiently as possible and keep that number as low as possible. There was a sources and uses page within your packet. It, it looks like this. It has the three projects. The yellow portion that's highlighted would be the, the city share and/or the, the money where we need to find sources for, whether that be separate fundraising, other grant opportunities, or ultimately, city bonding. So, just wanted to, to show a full and complete picture of that. For the folks watching at home, the total project cost related to the Downtown Riverfront Project- Project, the amphitheater market, that that project, just over 5.2 million. The total cost of the LCCMR project, the the trail and the bridge is just under, or just over 800,000. And then the reconstruction of the parking lots and the Union Avenue improvements is 675,000. So the three projects grant total cost of 6.7 million dollars. So certainly an extensive project and and one that a lot of time and energy has has been put into and will continue to be. So staff's recommendation this evening is to approve a resolution approving this professional services proposal for construction documents for these public improvements, the Downtown Riverfront Project, LCCMR Trail, and then the Downtown Parking Lot, Union Avenue Improvements. I guess I would ask Bill or Brian if they have anything to add, or Barry, otherwise, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at this as a as a team here and and feel that this is the appropriate way to proceed on this one.
Thanks, Andrew. We'll have discussion, but can we get a resolution on the floor to move that forward?
Off that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
Second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Questions the council has of Andrew, Bill, Brian, or Barry? Yes, Scott.
So the 787,000 that this initial construction document portion will require, the funding for that has been at least partially sourced already, or where does that come from?
So that goes into the project like we've talked about before with other projects that you wanna?
Yep, so like any other project, we would be up fronting those costs and carrying them in in the in the city project fund, and then ultimately be funded through those various sources that are listed on that sources and uses schedule. So certainly from the donations that come in, the ones that we have been already have been committed, if we do future fundraising as well, and then if the bonding package we would put together when we have all the numbers and where, you know, state bonding would come out, then that would fund that as well. So in essence, we would reimburse ourselves with the funding sources when they come in to fund these project costs. So again, it's kind of like when we did the library, where we had to do all this design ahead of time, charge it to the project, then when we issued the bonds, we were able to reimburse ourselves because we cover that under what's called a reimbursement resolution. We would do that for this project as well, too, if we go forward.
Very good. Other questions before we call for the vote?
Your Honor, I just, I just had a hard time on, I, you know, I I appreciate that we're getting kind of some of this money granted, but I still believe that we have a fiduciary duty to, on how we spend it. And the $600,000 to build a bridge essentially across the Otter Tail River to the falls just seems like a lot of money when we're neglecting the the path that goes from, you know, Cascade basically to Union. And, you know, that piece of the, that piece of the riverbank is not gonna get looked at in this in this plan. You know, we're spending 6.8 million dollars, and, you know, we're abandoning this this trail on on the south side. And, you know, we're taking 700,000 dollars from the Verdine Trust, and we're gonna spend it on an amphitheater. You know, we've got easements to get to go under under Mill Street, and we're gonna spend almost 800,000 dollars upfront, you know, and we don't have, obviously, assurance that we're gonna get the bonding from the state, which is, you know, 2.25 million dollars. And it just seems like our outlay is quite significant, and we don't, we we still have a lot of unknowns. And I appreciate that we have to be shovel-ready, and obviously, there's some advantages to that. But this project has morphed from being a three- to four-million-dollar project to almost, you know, seven million. And I just have concerns, you know, ultimately, you know, our share of it is gonna be roughly a third at 2.4 million. You know, the 800,000 we're gonna have to put in is a third of our commitment. If we don't get 2.25 million from the state in bonding, then, you know, we're gonna be on the hook for that. Our property tax revenue is is decreasing in terms of property values. And I I understand, obviously, the desire to want to bring more people downtown, but I'm not sure that we have a full, full plan on how we're gonna bring all of this together at this point in time. And so for that reason and for those reasons, I can't vote for this. I can't, I can't justify spending 800,000 at this point in time. I I think I need more assurance as to where we're going and and where we're gonna get the funding.
Thanks, Anthony. Other, did you, any other thoughts, questions, before we call for the vote?
Yes, I would just say, you know, whatever it's worth. I mean, I I just really, I feel like we need to to do something and be proactive in order to help, you know, foster growth. And and I mean, I see this project as as the way to do that, and I had the privilege of of touring the site with the Legislative Committee this summer, and their excitement was palpable. It was, it was very inspiring to 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 see how excited they they got, this Legislative Committee that's going to be deciding on our bonding, when they, when they saw the project and saw the the art boards that we had set up along the way, and to hear their comments and talk about how projects like this have been so successful in other cities in the states. So I, I support it. I think it's the way to go.
Thanks, Tom. And I would just comment, and I appreciate your concerns, Anthony. I would just say that, you know, it was more than three years ago when we started the process of the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan process, and yes, costs have gone up since then, but we've also done a very good job. Yes, as you mentioned, the legislature was here, there's every indication that they support this project, the matching funds that we've been able to secure. But to, you know, this, yes, it's a significant investment in our downtown. It's, as Tom said, I believe it's what's needed. And there's also four million, I don't know the exact number, but in city, sources outside of city dollars. So that's how we've said we're gonna get projects done. This has been our number-one project. I think it's, I think to make the commitment that we are actually going to do this is going to be, it's gonna be huge for our downtown, and it's why I've supported it, and it's why I supported tonight. So I appreciate the concerns. Any other comments before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Pinker.
Yes.
Fooming.
Yes.
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 No.
That resolution is approved. Item number six is a motion, thank you, Barry. Thank you. Item number six is a motion directed at the city attorney to draft changes to the city ordinance for boards and commissions, and I will call on our city administrator, Andy, Andrew Bremseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. I'd like to take the opportunity to put a plug in for people who are, who may be interested in serving the city in this capacity. We have several terms that are coming up on many of our boards and commissions, and we have not had the interest that we hope to have for people to to renew. So if there's people that are watching and they want to get part or be part of a committee or or take a role, an active role in the local government, we'd certainly encourage them to reach out to us and to express interest in that. I think just about every single board or commission that we have will have a seat open at the beginning of the year. So let us know if you're interested, and if you guys on the council have people that have expressed an interest or or think that you know of somebody that might be good, have them fill out an application or have them reach out to us, because that's important. This evening, we're looking for a motion directing the city attorney to draft a few changes to the city ordinance related to the boards and commissions. Last year, we decided to move the Public Arts Commission from five members up to seven, and the Planning Commission from seven members up to nine. And as well-intentioned as that was, I think that it was probably not the appropriate course of action, and and now is as good a time as any to reverse that course of action.
That was my fault.
What we've seen is that it's been harder to actually get quorums as more people are required for the quorum as the number of groups or the number in the committees have grown. And we've also, like, in 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 terms of the Arts Commission, we never did fill the two additional spots. The five original members certainly have been committed and and interested, but we weren't able to find additional people to fill those extra spots. So in terms of just the 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 less interest that we've seen and also the challenge of reaching quorums for a lot of these groups, we're asking to move that back down to those previous numbers. And again, well-intentioned, it was too bad it didn't work out, because it's always great to have more people involved in the the local government, but I think this will make things easier for these groups as they're working hard to establish quorum and find time that all of them can get together. So that's the recommendation this evening. If we get a motion directing the city attorney to make those changes, we can bring a ordinance back at the next meeting for its first reading and for further consideration.
Thank you, Andrew. Is there someone like to offer that motion?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Jim? Caroline, thank you. Is there a discussion? Anyone have questions for Andrew or for Rolf on that?
All favor. No, I don't have any questions.
All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of 898,928.10, and if we have any questions, we'll direct them to our city finance director. I think Scott had a question.
On the equipment expenses, I mean, each week or each meeting when we get together, we we pass these resolution records and spend a million dollars, and a lot of money just kind of flies by and we don't notice it. But I thought it would be worth taking a minute or two to note that we're buying a new truck, a plow truck, and the $80,000 that's being spent on that is actually only about half of the money that's gonna take to actually get that truck on the road for us. And I thought it would help if Bill explained the process for us a little bit on how our equipment is budgeted for, planned for, and replaced on a schedule like this when we can spend this kind of money and have a plan for it.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Yeah, this is one of our standard purchases that we are doing. It's a snowplow truck, as we certainly use here in Minnesota a lot. But we do plan for those purchases within what's called the Equipment Fund, and it's an internal service fund where the other departments of the city are the customers of that. So we set money aside, we we build in to cover the cost of it, the maintenance, the fuel, the repairs, and inflation, so that there's money to purchase that. So we're not borrowing money to purchase equipment. And in this case, so we're, we're purchasing this plow truck, we're just paying for the chassis tonight in this resolution, and at this, at this time, that's the cost of the chassis and sales tax on that. One thing that's interesting with the sales tax law here in Minnesota is when you, you have to pay sales tax on the chassis, but not then on the equipment that gets attached to the chassis. So that comes later through even a different vendor, I believe. Wouldn't that be correct, Guy?
Yep, that's correct.
So, and that's the common way of doing that, and that's the way the the vendors work as well. So the total price of this piece of equipment would be about 177,000 dollars. So that additional 96,000, if it was all paid for at the time of delivery, we'd have to pay sales tax on the whole 177, because it wouldn't be broke apart, which would cost us another 6,300. So it's certainly a good process that we, that's set up that we do that to break those purchases apart. Again, that's also standard practice throughout the industry as well. So we're not doing something unusual with it. Actually, we're just abiding by the law with it and then saving some sales tax on top of it. But shows that these are costly pieces of equipment at 177 total when it's all said and done. We will be either trading in the the current plow truck or selling that at auction as well, too, when that time comes. And I believe, Guy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're expecting delivery by the end of the year of this year, hopefully, or early?
I think it'll be early next year.
Okay.
In this particular, we'll be auctioned.
Okay, so we'll be auctioning the the one we're getting rid of.
And they don't just deliver the chassis, right? They deliver the truck?
No.
Chassis with this plow on the front, wait till we get the truck.
Just in time, the fourth month of plowing season. Summer plow. January, that's fourth month.
Scott, did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you very much, Bill.
You're welcome.
Jim?
How long do we expect this truck to be in use?
Go ahead.
Plow truck typically will be in service seven years as its scheduled replacement cycle. Typically, we've been keeping them longer, though.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of Bill or Guy? Do we have a, we have a resolution on the floor? We don't have a resolution. So would someone like to offer that resolution?
Jim always does this one.
Pay the bills. Thank you. Someone like to second that? Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Hoover.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports or reports from staff or administrative officers, old or unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one item of old unfinished business. Item number one is a resolution approving a preliminary and final plat of proposed Lot 1 Block 1 Westridge Theater Edition as requested by Westridge Mall Limited Partnership, and I will call on our city attorney to discuss this with us.
Thank you, Your Honor. This was discussed at your last meeting and basically was tabled for tonight for further discussion. There was questions relating to outstanding utilities which have been talked to with the purchaser and seller. There's nothing that has been agreed to as of yet. My suggestion, though, is that if your only basis is to deny a plat on outstanding utilities, I wouldn't utilize that as a as a basis, primarily because of the fact that you should have a more substantive basis for the denial. The the proposal, from what I understand, is either they will be paid at closing, and if they're not, Bill will then go ahead and certify them as delinquent payments to be certified to the property taxes, and they will get paid. So my suggestion is, is if there aren't any other reasons for denying the application or the for the preliminary and final plat, that it should be approved with that understanding moving forward.
Thank you, Rolf. With that, we'll get a resolution on the floor.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Questions, comments?
I had a comment.
The only thing I would add, Your Honor, members, is that our intent is to bring the resolution to certify at the next meeting in November. So two weeks from tonight, we would be looking to certify, if not paid by then, 16,180.22, and back, or overdue expenses related to the property. There is, Bill gave me the numbers twice today, and of course, I forgot them. It's just under, just over 19,000, I think, total.
Yep.
That's owed, so 16,180 of that would be certified in two weeks if the council chooses to do so.
Thanks. Scott?
One other comment, I made this last time, too, and I guess I'd like to get some more information or know if it makes a difference. The plan, as I remember, had access to the south with new approaches coming out of the parking lot to the street to the south, and there hadn't really been any discussion about that, and I was wondering if that was really necessary to include in the plat, because it opens into what's a residential street, and it's not necessarily a commercial street. So I was looking for some more feedback on that.
Sure. Did you have a comment on that?
You know, Brian, do you have anything to say? Otherwise, I may even ask.
Yeah, we, yeah, if you can hear, yes, no, that's shown on the preliminary plat. It's gonna be removed, you know, once the plating's done, completed. It's an illustrative purposes, just showing the existing where they could be. Keep in mind, we're subdividing this parcel off, and it's abutting a public street. So at that time, if access ingress was not granted from the adjacent owner, they had that ability to use, utilize a public street. They would, of course, come in and get a permit, and we would look at that, where that approach, size, and standard specs would be. But it's just shown right there. It's not gonna be recorded, but it is already abutting public rights away right now.
Sure. And we do have a representative from the theater that's here tonight. Tony Tillman is here. He came up to join us at the council meeting, so.
As I understood it, I mean, I understood that this, just because it's on the plat doesn't mean it was gonna get built next week, that there would be more process to it, and it would have to go through an approval and all that. But it just seemed like I needed to know a little bit more about how that process would work.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure why it's showing on there. We look at that, every time we're subdividing and everything, we look at those points of access, and that was there, shown as illustrative. That is not construction drawings, that's in the preliminary plat. This is just a plating process, so.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, Tony.
So I'm Tony Tillman, I'm Vice President of Cinem Entertainment. So we are the operators of the movie theater at the Westridge Mall. So part of it, what we're doing out there is trying to guarantee that our theater, that the theater will stay there. So we're very concerned about the mall. So, and we, you know, we want to stay as a movie theater there. So us, we would, typically, we own most of our properties. We're not located in malls. We have 20 locations in the, about a five-state area. And, I mean, in an ideal world, with the theater the way it is, we probably wouldn't be looking to buy it, because it's, it's, it takes on a lot of other be looking to buy it because it's, it's, it takes on a lot of other things then when we buy this theater that's attached to a mall. But I think we've been able to work through those issues with the mall owner and how we can subdivide this out. We do have one other theater that is subdivided from a mall so that we kind of own the real estate, but we're part of the mall. The access road is relatively important to us and not so much that we want to put it in now, but it protects us that in the event that something happens to the rest of the mall and the cross and suddenly our access isn't ideal anymore. So it's kind of more of an insurance policy for us that in the future, if things happen that make it not real conducive for our customers to be able to come through that parking lot, that we have an access point. So we do want it, I mean, we do want the city to know that that is an important thing for us to proceed with buying the real estate, is that we know that we have an access point. We don't really, we don't intend to put it in right away.
Thank you, Tony. Thanks, thanks for being here tonight too. Any other questions of Rolf, Tony, Andrew?
Is, is, I mean, following up on Scott's question, is, is that, you know, the road that does go on the south of the mall, you know, if we get additional traffic on that residential road, what, what will that kind of mean? I mean, I understand obviously your logic of, of why you need it, but, you know, have we looked at that in terms of what it would, how it would impact the residents in that area? And are we notifying the residents, you know, and, you know, of that potential change so that they have input in this, in this scenario?
Yeah, Your Honor, I, to the, to the last part of your question, the, the residents within a 350 foot area would have been notified of the planning commission meeting where the plat was walked through and discussed, which would have shown that on there.
Would that have been, that would have been 350 feet from the point of access to the road or 350 feet from the mall, from the cinema?
Ryan, I guess I would defer to you as to how you.
I mean, there's a, there's a difference between where the, where the cinema sits and where the access point is going to be. It's, I mean, I'm, I'm going just down, we had a, we had a scenario in, in a, on Martins where, you know, people kind of, because it was almost a bare piece of land, you know, the residents didn't know what was going on until the plat was approved.
So for the public hearing, for the preliminary plat at the October 14th Planning Commission meeting, for that public hearing, we sent out a notice to 350 feet from the property line of the original mall property. So the entire perimeter of the mall property, all the way to the road, all the way around the north side, fronting Lincoln Avenue. So it was a very large 350 feet perimeter, not just from the, not just from the theater.
Residents on the south side would have gotten notice.
Right. 350 feet from basically the northern edge of Western Avenue. So all the Lower Lane, Lionel Lane, Andrew. I believe it went about halfway down each of those streets, 350 feet is where the radius ended from the property line.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we vote?
Just like assurance that we're going to, we're going to follow up on this 19,000 dollars that the mall owns.
Will the opportunity to certify in two weeks? Or 16,000 of these proportions eligible to be certified?
Right, because we can only go back. Go ahead, Bill.
It needs to be 45 days or older is what we're authorized to certify. So that's what comes on that list annually before you, that's at the next meeting, so.
I mean, as, as much as I, I don't, I, I've absolutely wanted the cinema to stay, but I also.
I'm concerned about the money too. We all.
You don't want to pay it.
So I'm concerned, I, we intend to get.
And that's my concern.
So it's not, it's not the, I mean, it's not the property taxes, it's, it's some other bill that can be certified so then it would go against the property. And then, so it's something that we're concerned about.
This is an opportunity for us too.
Yeah.
So I thank you.
We like to pay our bills.
Thank you for participating.
Yeah, thanks for being here and thanks for, uh.
Thanks for paying me, Bill.
Your, uh, interest in continuing to be in first of all, we certainly appreciate that. So with that, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thanks for being here. There is no new business this evening, so with that, just a couple miscellaneous announcements. November 11th is Veterans Day holiday. City offices, most city offices and facilities are closed. Monday garbage is picked up Tuesday, Tuesday's picked up Wednesday. November 13th is the committee, the whole, November 18th is the next council meeting. One other item I wanted to announce, a week from tomorrow, November 12th, at a Center for the Arts, 5 to 6:30, it's an event that's sponsored by the Downtown Riverfront Council. Annie Decker from Greater Fergus Falls is going to be there, Matt Marshall from Otter Tail Power, the mayor, Sean Douse of Red Wing and, and some other representatives, mayor to mayor, the series that they've done, they're going to talk about some of the, what they've done in Red Wing, some of the successes they've had around their downtown and their arts and how they've been able to capitalize on the river and what we can learn and kind of continuing that series of conversations that we've had with other communities.